Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Good evening. Records show that all council members are here but Councilman Fairbanks. The Open Meetings Act is posted up there on the wall. Tonight's a fun night to start things off. We have Mayor for the Day and just so everybody knows how these young people earned the right to be here today, Keep Beatrice Beautiful and the City of Beatrice are basically here to recognize the 2024 Mayor of the Day winners in our Great American Cleanup Recycling Project. So between April 11th and April 18th, 2024, the second grade students at Lincoln School, Paddock Lane Schools, St. Joseph Catholic Schools, and St. Paul's Lutheran School collected items for recycling. Their recycling efforts helped keep Beatrice clean and beautiful. We are grateful for the second grade students who participated and acknowledge them for keeping our community clean and litter free. The Mayor for the Day winners will receive a certificate of appreciation from Keep Beatrice Beautiful and the City of Beatrice, a Keep Beatrice Beautiful t-shirt, a gift certificate for a combo meal from Runza, a coupon for a Blizzard from either Dairy Queen or some other, and some other Keep Beatrice Beautiful promotional items. So with that, I want to come down forward and I'll first introduce Ashley Hawks, who is the Executive Director for Keep Beatrice Beautiful. And after she helps me here, we'll just hear a little bit about keeping Beatrice beautiful. We'll make sure we have plenty of time for pictures, so as I hang him out, don't be afraid to snap a shot here. Okay. First person we're going to start out with is Trenton Edwards.
Trenton's accent makes everyone else uncomfortable.
Sidney Pops. Sidney? There we go. You're welcome. Want a picture here? Let's get a picture. Thank you. You get it? All right. Catherine Perry. All right. Thank you very much. Henry Erickson.
Good job.
Thank you. Eric Hespen. Thank you.
She's waiting for his kickback.
Amelia Mark. Candace Fairbanks. Thank you. And Sidney Aganoff. Well, thank you for everything you did. That's exciting. Ashley, you only have to say a few words.
You want me to do that now before I dismiss them? Or I was just going to talk a little bit about Keep Beatrice Beautiful and what we're doing. They're free to go.
Okay, yeah, you guys are free to go if you wish. And thank you very much for participating. And this is a number of years we've been doing this and we've been deciding, believe me, it's going to be the most fun part of my night.
Job's open in a couple of years, right, Bob?
What's that?
Job's open in a couple of years, right, for all these young guys?
Wait a minute, did he just say we're difficult?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I said it's probably.
I think just you, Rich.
Okay. So my name is Ashley Hawks. My maiden name is Schnelly. I became the Executive Director on January 1st of this year. I have three kids, nine, 11, and 13. And that's my nine-year-old back there that's assisting tonight. I graduated from Dillard-Odel High School, so this area is kind of home to me. I've always took great pride in my community, so this position means much more to me than just a job. When I first saw the job posting that Jerry posted, I had never heard of KBB. And so I just kind of overlooked it. About a couple of months later, it came up again, so I reached out to Jerry and thought I'd look into it, not expecting it to be something that I would be interested in. But to my surprise, and after a little convincing from Jerry, I took the position and I am super excited to be here. Since I didn't know what the organization was about when I first saw it, I decided one of my first priorities was to get our name out there more in social media. And so we've increased our social media from 342 to almost 1,000 followers, which I feel is pretty good because Keep Nebraska Beautiful just reached 1,000 followers. So I'm excited about that. We have done several events that I know they have done in the past, and we have several things that were, that are new that we're looking forward to doing. In April, we did the electronic waste collection and collected over 4,000 pounds of electronics. We're talking about doing twice a year for that event, but for sure once a year as it's pretty popular. We've provided educational gifts to Beatrice pre-K through 5th graders this year for Earth Day, which was about 1,300 students. You just saw the Mayor for a Day winners. There was, again, four different buildings participated, and I believe they collected about 20 full bags of recyclables, so much more than expected. So they were really excited about that. We currently had about 15 litter groups cleaning up this spring. Around 20 miles in and around Beatrice have been cleaned by these groups. Roughly 800 pounds of trash picked up off of our streets. We also had one group clean up Riverside Park, which I believe is roughly 42 acres. And they also, if there's not a lot of trash, they will pick up branches, get them off to the side, so it's easier for our mowers to get in and around those parks and get them clean. The tire amnesty is coming up, and I believe it's fairly new to most of us on the board. So Chet and Mark have been extremely helpful with that event. So I think Chet has been working mostly on that, and we will get more updates on that at our next board meeting and get those details posted soon. I think we are set to collect 200 ton of tires, so more than likely, we will not go into day two. But as of right now, August 8th and 9th, at the fairgrounds will be where that is held. Another new project that we're planning will probably be next spring around Arbor Day with the new elementary school going up. There is obviously lots of landscaping and trees to be put out there. They have already done quite a few things, but there are some outside areas that trees could be planted. Black Hills Energy actually contacted me and is interested in partnering with us and helping with that. And with that, we would have possibly either one tree per grade or one tree per class, depending on what kind of funds we get. We would invite the students out to help plant the trees, give a presentation about planting the trees, and Black Hills Energy would also talk about what it takes to, before you dig, you got to know what's underneath the ground, things like that. So very educational for kids, and we want to get them involved in that. So that is planned for Arbor Day next year. And additionally, we, I have spoken with the Walmart manager, who also reached out to me after receiving our membership letter, wanting to partner with us as well. Their employees will, they like to get their employees out in the communities that they work and volunteer. And in return, if they volunteer for us, Walmart will reimburse us for their time. And so I plan to go out and meet with them once a month, or when we have events coming up to talk to them and have them, their employees come out and volunteer around the city for events that we do. Right now, we operate off of our, mainly our two grants in public education and litter cleanup, along with the tire amnesty, but I'm looking to find more grants that we can do more things around the city when things come up. So that's basically it right now. Is there any questions?
Ashley, thank you.
Very good job. Good luck. Yep.
You're hitting the ground running. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, first on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on May 20, 2024, as on file with the City Clerk's office. Approval of the minutes of the work session meeting on May 20th, 2024, as on file with City Clerk's office. Approval of the treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $719,228.45. Approval of Boswell Report of Claims in the amount of $16,374.33. Award of bid for lift station number six rehabilitation project by Philip Krikowski, construction entrenching in the amount of $547,785, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Resolution number 7316, executing amendment number two to the agreement dated August 7th, 2023 between the City of Beatrice and Olson Incorporated, in order to retain Olson for additional construction observation services related to the repair and rehabilitation of lift station number six, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J, resolution number 7317, executing an agreement for professional services between the City and JEO Consulting Group to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services for 33rd and Lincoln Street reconstruction project, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, resolution number 7318, approving and accepting the bid submitted by Voc. Parga Construction LLC to reconstruct taxiway C and Apron, subject to the contingent, subject and contingent upon the FAA's concurrency in award and offer of the Airport Improvement Program grant, as recommended by the Airport Advisory Board. Item L, resolution number 7319, entering into a hanger lease with CB Flying LLC for the purpose of leasing hanger B4 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item M, resolution number 7320, entering into the hanger lease for Farabee Mechanical Incorporated for the purpose of leasing hanger D6 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Resolution number 7321, entering into the hanger lease for Farabee Mechanical Incorporated for the purpose of leasing hanger D7 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item O, resolution number 7322, entering into the hanger lease for Paul Schliffhoff for the purpose of leasing hanger B2 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. And item P, resolution number 7323, entering into a hanger lease for Savannah Ross LLC for the purpose of leasing hanger E5 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Anybody have anything they want to pull off the agenda?
I do. Easy stuff. Okay, just a couple of questions. F.
Okay. Pull F off of the agenda. Mr. McLean?
I move the items listed on the consent agenda, with the exception of item F, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second. Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes 7-0.
I move that item F listed on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second. Discussion.
Just a couple of easy things, and we probably have discussed this before, and I didn't have a chance to get to Tobias today. The second half paid MFO distribution to the fire departments, can you, you probably have before, I'm sorry if you have, but can you explain that again to everybody? Maybe everybody else but me knows that.
Yeah, so MFO is municipal financial, municipal, I think it's fire operations. Anyhow, it is a state law out there that if all of the municipal fire organizations in the county levy the same amount of tax levy, that the state gives us additional dollars. They give those dollars to the City of Beatrice as the fiscal agent, and we then pay them out to the other organizations.
So is it equal in and out?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. The $250,000 to Main Street, where's that come from?
LB840.
Good. All right. And this is maybe a little redundant, but I'm sure either you or Taylor is keeping track of Merchant McIntyre. So when we get around to evaluating these guys, we can be able to show some kind of totals to us and the community and stuff about how good a job they're doing.
Yes. I mean, we keep track with what grants they've submitted, what grants have been awarded, and when it comes closer to time for renewal, we can bring that information back for your review.
Great. Great. That's it, Mayor. That's all I had. Thanks.
That MFO, that's not split evenly. It goes by.
No, I think it goes by tax levy or by valuation. But no, it's not evenly across to everybody. We just all have to levy the same tax levy, one out of every three years, and then you get it. We have an ongoing agreement with those organizations. And again, we just act as the fiscal agent, and so the state sends us the money, and then we send it back out to those other organizations.
Anything else? If not, your vote, please. That passes 7-0. All right. Tonight, we do have a public hearing. The public hearing is for the purpose of considering the rezoning of Lot 4, Block 22, Wittenburg's addition, City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, commonly known as 1911 Ella Street, from GC, General Commercial District, to R2, Single Family Residential District.
So if you are at 19th and Ella Streets, you've got Oakview Vet Clinic there on the corner, which would be the southeast corner of that intersection. The first two lots there you see, those were Lot 6 and 5, those are what Oakview has. Lot 4 there, that first lot to the east of them, has come in and requested that they be rezoned from General Commercial to R2. As you see, R2 is what is to the east of them, is what is to the north of them. And so our recommendation is that you go ahead and move the lot line, or excuse me, the rezoning line, one block, or excuse me, one lot to the west and incorporate Lot 4 and approve this rezoning. Planning a zoning review tonight, they recommended approval of it. I believe initially, it was some interest in Oakview Vet of acquiring that lot at one point, and so that's why it was left as a GC lot. Obviously, they've done something else with their expansion, and so that lot never became part of their operation. It has a residential house on it. It's had a residential house on it for quite some time. And so hence the change at this point.
Any discussion up here for the public hearing? How about from the audience? Seeing none, let's close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:18 PM.
Second. Your vote, please. And that passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to ordinances. The first ordinance is amending the zoning map for the City of Beatrice, Nebraska by changing the zoning of.
We've got to go to the resolution.
What's that? Oh, yeah. Sorry. Skipped over that. All right. Resolution, resolution number 7324, executing the general release request for reconvenance and the deed of reconvenance, along with all other necessary documents to terminate the deed of trust, release, and discharge Mama Bear Dan's LLC regarding the LB840 loan agreement between the City and Mama Bear Dan's LLC, Kurt Hagerman and Jay Hagerman.
I move the resolution number 7324 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So we loaned Mama Bear Dan's money $100,000 in about September of 2022. That loan's been paid off. Quite honestly, we just missed coming back and having you guys release all the collateral. It was brought to our attention here last week, and so we brought it forward this time. But at this point, we would release the outstanding loan as it's been paid in full plus interest. We'd release all the collateral that's outstanding and move forward.
Any discussion needed? Pretty straightforward. Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes 7-0. Okay, now we'll move on to ordinances. Ordinance amending the zoning map for the City of Beatrice, Nebraska by changing the zoning of the properly legally described as Lot 4, Block 22, Wittenburg's addition, City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, commonly known as 911, 1911 Ella Street, from GC, General Commercial District, to R2, Single Family Residential District.
I move that said ordinance be given number 24-21. The title thereof be approved. The rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that passes 7-0. Ordinance number 2421 by number the first time, 2421 the second time, and 2421 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 24-21 be passed and approved.
Second. Any more discussion needed since we just dealt with it? If not, gentlemen, your vote, please. Ordinance number 2421 has passed and been adopted 7-0. Ordinance number 2416, second reading on the proposed annexation of property owned by the Beatrice Cemetery Association, Gage County, partial number 00424000, and Gage County partial number 004241200, now plotted as Lot 2, Hanner Subdivision, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance number 24-16 be read by title only for the second time tonight.
Second.
Just remember, this is the ground up by the cemetery at 33rd Street. This would be on the east side of 33rd Street. We talked about it the last meeting, the meeting before that, you had another resolution to set the public hearing. Assuming it passes tonight, you'll have a third and final reading two weeks from tonight for passage.
Toby, have you heard anything from anybody on that?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion on this ordinance? If not, your vote, please. That passes 7-0. Ordinance number 2416, an ordinance to extend the boundaries and include within the corporate limits of and to annex to the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, partial land owned by the City of, by the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, a municipal corporation which is adjacent, contiguous, and located in or near the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, to provide service benefits thereto, to repeal conflicting ordinances, and to provide for publication in electronic form and effective date of this ordinance. Okay. Next ordinance, number 2417, second reading on the proposed annexation of Gage County parcel number 005039000, commonly known as 2876 West Belvedere Road, and that portion thereof now plotted as Lot 1, DeBoer Addition, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance number 24-17 be read by title only for the second time tonight.
Second.
This is a parcel of land that is by South Sumner Street and Belvedere Street, outlier on the Lake Ladue area, a little farther to the west, as we indicated last time, when this ground was replatted. It has parcel, some of the ground is inside city limits today, some of the ground's outside city limits today, and annexation would bring all of it inside the city limits.
Tobias, can you tell us who requested this change?
I believe the application was filed by Jay DeBoer, trustee of the DeBoer Trust.
Is he the legal person, as far as you know, that could apply for this?
Yes.
Hold on a minute. You gotta come up here.
Hang on. Let's, first the discussions up here, then we'll go there.
So this annexation of boundaries don't vary different from others when we've brought property to the city limits. There's little zigzags in it, but there's not a complete circle around where we can go.
Yes. I mean, at times, your zoning lines aren't always perfectly straight, but you don't end up with parcels that are part in the city limits and part outside the city limits.
You know, if there's any other disputes that you know of, that the person that brought this has informed you of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Anything else up here?
Yeah, the electricity that runs along West Belvedere Road, how far out to the west does that go?
You're talking about the City of Beatrice line? I believe our line goes out at least to the west or to, I guess that's Sumner Street. I was off the street. I'm sorry, we're on South Center Street. I would have to look to see if we go past Sumner Street. We might, and I don't know for sure off the top of my head.
Actually, it runs all the way to SCC's South Campus, the thing. And the water line does the same thing. So again, I'm going to bring it up, and I know that there's representatives from the landowners out here that have suggested they do not want to be annexed in. And I'm wondering, if the city water and electricity runs all the way out to there, why we're not incorporating another mile and a half?
Again, you have to be contiguous to city limits, and you have to be urban or suburban in nature. And so that's why you haven't seen a lot of those areas get annexed in yet, just because they don't meet those other statutory requirements.
Okay. Anybody else up here from the audience? Anybody just would introduce yourself and your address?
I am Chase DeBoer. I live at 2876 West Belvedere Road. I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting, but I was able to watch it. I know Tobias had said that he was not aware that we did not want to be a part of this. I'm just making this statement that he was. I talked to him on the phone for probably 35 minutes. At one point, I said so basically on SOL, and he said, well, no, but it's going to happen no matter what. We were never given any, any warning about this. When it was brought up to us, we were two days out from closing on the property. I know it was said that everybody involved knew about it. It was, it was never brought to anybody's attention. I'm just trying to figure out why we can't parcel the property that's in the city limits, as city limits, and leave the other out. I don't see a reason to have it all. If we do take it, or if you do take it, why, like Tim just asked, why can't we go all the way to Sumner? They've got the same utilities. It's just, it doesn't make sense to come up my west property line, go back west, go north for the next piece of ground you're going to talk about, and then go back west to Sumner. You're already going to Sumner anyway. Why not just take the corner? Is, is what I'm trying to figure out. And then when I spoke with you on the phone, you said we would be zoned the same as RR, and at this last meeting, you said we'd be zoned R2. I don't know where that came from. I'm just kind of looking for answers because nobody's really explained anything. This was kind of brought up one day, and I haven't really been told much. So I, and I don't, I don't want to be a part of it, if that's at all possible, but I guess if we are, I would like it to go all the way to Sumner, just to make it, that's what seems right to me, I guess. And the other thing is I don't, I was told there was, somebody had asked a separate property owner if they wanted to be a part of it. They said no. And that property is not currently being annexed. I don't think that's right. I think if you're going to do it, you do it all or do it none. That's all I got.
Thank you. Sure. Yep, state name and address, certainly may.
My name is Gary DeBoer. I live at 7061 East Maple Road, Beatrice. This property has been in my family for the last 50 years. And Jay did not request this to be put in the city limits. We have never asked for this property to be in the city limits. This is part of my parents' trust. My son has bought this piece of property. It has been split off because he couldn't afford to buy it all. Nobody knew about the city limits until two days prior to this happening. Tobias, I don't know what you told, I know what you told my son. But what your comments, the last council meeting, were a blatant lie. Because the people that have bought the ground behind us also told you on the phone, they do not want to be in the city limits. When you pick out somebody that works for the city, that owns property right next door, and you ask them if they want to be in the city limits, and they say no, that is wrong. Tell me it's not wrong. and they say no, that is wrong. Tell me it's not wrong, because if you're gonna pull this in, he, my son would like to build a shed out there that's bigger than the 30 by 40 that you guys allow, and you told him he cannot build a building bigger than 30 by 40 when he becomes in the city limits. He cannot have any livestock. If he'd like to feed a cow or whatever out, out there, he can't do it. So, I have animals in my house, he would like to have maybe one or two at his place, not immediately, but in some time. And as soon as you take him in the city limits, you make it illegal for him to have that. So, the, I believe it needs to go all the way to Sumner. My next problem is, what are you gonna do about the sewer? Are you gonna bring sewer out to him, and are you gonna make him pay for the sewer? Because he's the only property on that road right now that will be within the city limits. Because I know about some of the sewer systems that went on with Hall's Body Shop and how much he had to pay for that. So, I'm just asking, because looking through what it says on the ordinances in Beatrice, septic tanks might be illegal if sewer is available. That's another reason he does not want to be in the city limits, because we have a septic tank that's already in process, it's been there for years, and it works just fine. So, by going to the city limits, are we gonna have to do, is he gonna, is he going to have to get rid of that? Questions that haven't been answered. You just wanna take the property after my parents' estate paid for all the surveys and had to buy the streets from the city that us as children didn't even know existed. So, we have $5,000 in this thing already, just to give it away. So, if Jay told me he'd never asked to be in the city limits, so what you said earlier tonight is not the truth. So, that's all I have to say. I just want some clarification, and I want you to be truthful with everybody that's involved in this. And I know the Belts have a family picture tonight, they can't be here, but they felt the same way, and Ryan told me that he talked to you, Tobias, and he does not want to be in the city limits. So, I don't understand any reason why it benefits the city to be there. So, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
You say that Jay didn't have the right to do this?
Jay, Jay had all the rights. He was the power of attorney. He never said he wanted the property within the city limits. He said tonight, he wanted the property in the city limits. That was not our intentions. Never was. If I would have had the money to give him to buy all the property, I would have.
Would Jay come down and tell us that?
Sure he will. He told me today he never had any. Nobody told us, nobody told us, whether it be the city attorney, or you, that you were gonna take this into the city limits until after we paid the $5,000, to have it all surveyed out, and pay for Bluff Street, and pay for all, everything else that was there. I think it's a dirty deal. I think it's a backwards deal. That's my opinion.
This is the second reading, we have another reading.
I'm Laura DeBoer, 7061 East Maple Road, and I'm gonna come at this from a different angle. So, we want the kids to be able to have what they want on their property. Chase was raised on a farm, he wants to be able to put up a shed, have, you know, like Gary said, a few cattle, but you're also, by doing this, you're going to interrupt what Gary and I are thinking to do for retirement, because we're all, we're all getting to be that age, right? We wanna live half of our time in our Missouri house, and we wanna live the other half, yeah, in Gage County. And I always thought that Gage County talked about family roots, keep your roots here. Well, as Gary said, we've been here for 50-plus years. Nokes has been here for 50-plus years. If you annex this in, he's not gonna be able to put up a shoust. We were gonna help him do that. We were gonna live in the shoust on that property half of the time, and the other half in Missouri, and if you do this, you're interfering with my retirement. How would you feel if somebody that you don't know is making decisions and is affecting how I'm gonna live my retirement years? And so, I'm coming at it from a different angle. I mean, it's, Doris and Roger were proud that they lived in the Beatrice area, but it was rural. He, Roger was proud he didn't live in the city. We're speaking for Gary's parents, who are no longer here. They don't want this. We don't want this. So, when you, when you vote, think about this, you know? Think about somebody else having a vote on how you're gonna retire and where you're gonna live. You're not gonna like it either. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I would just say that this is a second reading, so there'll be another reading before it be final.
The next reading will be in two weeks. Bring Jay down here, have him here, because I think you might have swayed some people, but we wanna hear everything, like with Jay. And this vote isn't important. The next one's gonna be the important one. Two weeks.
Yep. Jay is just the power of attorney, I said, and my folks had to sit up. He just couldn't be here tonight, so...
Well, you got another shot at him in two weeks. Any other discussion needed before we vote? If not, your vote, please. One, two, three, four, five. Five, it passes five to two. Ordinance Number 2417, an ordinance to extend the boundaries and include within the corporate limits of and to annex to the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, partial of land owned by the City of Nebraska, a municipal corporation which is adjacent, contiguous, and located in or near the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, to provide service benefits thereto, to repeal conflicting ordinances, and to provide for publication in electronic form and the effective date of this ordinance. Ordinance Number 2418, it's the second reading on the proposed annexation of Gage County Parcel Number 005039000, commonly known as 2876 West Belvedere Road, less that portion of there, thereof now plotted as Lot One, DeBoer's Addition, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance Number 24-18 be read by title only for the second time tonight.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, gentlemen up here? From the audience? Seeing none, your vote, please. Do we need five?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the second reading?
Correct.
Okay. That's five to three. Ordinance Number 2418, an ordinance to extend the boundaries and include within the corporate limits of and to annex to the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, partial land owned by the City of Nebras, City of Beatrice, Nebraska, a municipal corporation which is adjacent, contiguous, and located in or near the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, to provide service benefits thereto, to repeal conflicting ordinances, and to provide for publication in electronic form and effective date of this ordinance. Okay. Public forum, anybody here for the public forum?
Shalina McGuire, 722 North 7th. But I came for the friends of the Falls. So, we're having, I wanted to invite you all personally, and I figured this was probably the easiest way, since you're here, but we're having a ribbon cutting on the 13th at 11:40, and would love to see you all there, because I know you had so much to do with it, so...
Where is that for?
That's for the waterfall out there. They're having a ribbon cutting, so...
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? There are no discussion reports tonight. Next regular City Council meeting will be June 17th, 2024, at seven. There'll be a workstation, or a work session at, on that same night at six, and now we will go into executive session.
I move the Beatrice City Council going to close session at 7:39 PM for protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes seven zero. Okay.